Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special city council meeting and workshop. Today's March ninth, two thousand and twenty one. This session will be conducted remotely and council members will only participate electronically. For those viewing online, please ensure that you join this meeting using the following website. WWW dot Lewiston main dot gov slash two thousand and twenty one CC. If by chance you joined our meeting using any other link, we encourage you to go online and type in the web address that I just gave you. Public comment on any item apparent on the agenda may be sent to public comments at Lewiston main dot gov. Prior to adjourn the meeting and all comments received will be forwarded to the city council. And members of the public who are logged into the meeting online can make comments when invited to do so by raising your hand button in the lower center of your screen. And counselors, of course, are also asked to raise their hand. And with that said, we'll move into the six P M. Special meeting. Which is acceptance of the minutes of March second, two thousand and twenty one, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move that we wave reading of the minutes and accept them as prepared by the clerk.
Second that.
Okay, moved by counselor Clement, seconded by counselor Julyness. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Counselor from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, and Counselor Ray has asked to give us a brief update on the school committee budget, I believe. So before we end our special meeting and head into the work session, Counselor Ray, if there's no objections from counselors, I'll turn it over to Counselor Ray. Okay, seeing none, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I did just want to pop in and update you all that we are continuing to review the school. The superintendent's proposed budget that we talked about last week with the six point nine nine percent increase again. Folks are just adding more to the parking lot to be discussed rather than pulling things back in my estimation, my observation, I guess. And so, again, I just wanted to ask if folks have had time to reflect on that. And if there's any general direction that you or you as a representative feel like you should direct us to heading. It feels a little. Like we might get really far down this road and through this process as a school committee without input from the council. And just because it's such a dramatic increase. But part of that is due to what happened last year. I just really want to. Ask again, I guess, is my point.
And when we have superintendent Langless. Come into a meeting and the chair, when are they coming for the presentation that they typically do every year?
I think it's March twenty second.
March twenty second is a joint meeting that will not be the budget presentation. It's just a joint meeting between the two. Two committees and then the budget presentation, I believe, and Heather will correct me, I believe it's April thirteenth. Or right around there is the actual budget. No.
No, their first presentation is that night.
I'm sorry.
And then they do kind of after they've done their review, considered adjustments and so forth. Then they come back with what they consider to be their semi final budget in April.
So, so. Director Hunter, are you saying that the twenty second is not really a, it's really a meeting for them to present the budget to us?
Correct.
Okay.
And you can ask questions and so forth. It's a workshop. It's a joint workshop on their budget.
I mean, one of the things that was clear to me, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, Counselor Ray, in response to you soliciting feedback, I mean, I haven't a chance to look it through. Not very thoroughly, but I mean, at full glance, you know, from beginning to end, and one of the things that has struck me and looking at is that. There's clearly already been some cuts considered. I mean, this is not. It didn't strike me as a Cadillac version by any means. I'll be curious to hear the presentation, the rationale behind. Some of what's being presented, but that was my first thought when I read it was, wow, you know, this is tough.
Yeah, and I would say each administrator, including the superintendent, assistant superintendent and chief administrative officer have reflected on that point, too. So, yeah, it's definitely not a Cadillac budget as you so thoughtfully phrase that.
Yeah, Counselor Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know in like previous years, superintendents have put out like multiple plans for like, this is what we could potentially do if we tried to keep like a zero increase or just this percent increase. Is the school committee kind of working towards that with all the work that's being put into this, like parking lot ideas? Or is it just kind of like in one direction of raising it?
Yeah, so that's definitely what I'm trying to express here. I'm hearing a lot of. We need to take this base budget that's already almost seven percent increase and add to it. Because the six point nine nine percent increase. Superintendent says it in his memo, and I truly believe it based on. My time on the school committee, that that increase does not satisfy the needs of all of our learners. It includes use of COVID funding for some things that are recurring expenses, which doesn't feel great. So like extended school day and extended school year have been cut from this budget. And moved into COVID relief funding, which then places them in jeopardy for the F Y twenty three budget. Lots of after school programming has been cut when we are about to go into a period when we can't have students back in in person instruction. And we need to do a lot of remediation from the past year, but we're not able to fund that going forward.
And Heather, I last week I had asked you for what the percentage was, but what I meant to ask, I believe, is what the percentage increase was going to be to the local share. Do you know what that is? Can you unmute and share it?
Sorry, I'm clicking as I, as we're talking. Hang on just a second. You mean on the tax rate?
Yes.
Okay, so on those, it's a fourteen point one one percent on the tax rate.
All right, and that's considered the local share, basically.
There's two pieces. There's the required local share, and then there's the above local share. That's all inclusive.
Okay. So that's a significant, I mean, that's definitely a significant tax increase. I'm not sure we've seen it that high in many, many years. Or am I mistaken when I make that comment?
No, you are not mistaken.
All right, Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for Counselor Ray, having not seen the city budget, I don't know. I've reviewed the school budget. Knowing where we came from last year and seeing what I've seen thus far. I think it'd be premature for any comment from the council, other than to say that we want to enter into this. In as frugal a method as possible. I just don't think that the people in the city of Lewiston are ready to get crushed with a massive tax increase. All at one time. But haven't seen the city side of the budget, I can't imagine, but what there's going to be some hurt there as well. Based on our deliberations from last year. So I would caution everyone. To be as conservative as possible, as long as possible into this process. Maybe there'll be a windfall somewhere along the line, but I'm not sure what that's going to be, if it is at all. And I don't think we want to be planning on massive increases on either side. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. So we'll move into our workshop. I did, I just want to take a moment and acknowledge Counselor Ray. This time of year is probably the most difficult for the counselor who serves on the school committee. Because you're, you're basically doing double meetings for the council and doing double meetings for the school committee as well, so. And school committee meetings are long and tiring to begin with, so when you add a mix there, that's can be very challenging. So Alicia, we appreciate your hard work on this. Okay, with that, so do we, I'll need a motion to adjourn from the special meeting. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Counselor Jensen, seconded by Counselor Clement, and call the roll, please.
Your counselor from word one.
Yes.
Word two.
Yes.
Word three.
Yes.
Word four.
Yes.
Word five.
Yes.
Word six.
Yes.
And word seven.
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move to workshop item A, review of pandemic pandemic emergency small business loan. And residential landlord loan programs. Good evening, Heidi.
Good evening.
Are you the sole presenter?
I'm going to be presenting, and Misty is also here.
I see Misty there, too. Sorry. Okay, so whoever's going to take your way first, please do. After you introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Heidi McCarthy, Economic Development Specialist for the City of Lewiston. Misty, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yes, Misty Parker, Economic Development Manager.
Thank you.
I'm getting the internet connection is unstable message here in my office, so if I do cut out, please let me know, and I'm ready to sign in on another device, but it just doesn't have video. I'm here tonight to address some possible next steps for the pandemic emergency small business loan. And then move into a proposal for a potential program that could assist our landlords with some of the difficulties they're facing. Going to go ahead and share my screen. There we go. All right. So just as a reminder about the first pandemic emergency small business loan, it was approved by the council back in. Late spring to assist. People who are small businesses who didn't qualify for funding through our micro enterprise and economic development programs through C D B G. We do still have the micro enterprise and C D and economic development loans and. Have had people apply for and be approved for those at this time. We've also had people. Who were not approved for those, so this has been helpful, especially for those people who did apply for those programs, but didn't meet the eligibility requirements. This was offered on a closed application process. Applications were due on July first of two thousand and twenty. After it was approved, people had about a month, month and a half to apply. We had five inquiry inquiries about the program. And three who completed the application. All three who completed the application were approved. For a total of ten thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars expended from the pandemic emergency small business loan fund. Which means there's a hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars remaining. Since the application has closed, we have had some inquiries, especially recently. We released this program at a time when other programs were also being released, such as the Maine Economic Recovery Grant. Which allowed people to have forgivable sources to meet some of their needs. Most of those programs, except for the PPP are. Complete at this time, and PPP closes at the end of this month. So we think it's a good time to reconsider this loan and to. Look at what we can do to serve our community. And along those lines, we reached out to the business community, both to for profit and nonprofit businesses. Because we were thinking this might be an opportunity for nonprofit businesses who at the time had. A lot of limitations to other sources, but we didn't have any nonprofits apply, so we did reach out. And asked what some of the barriers were. One common theme that we heard both from for profit and nonprofit businesses is that they were reluctant. Take on a loan that they weren't sure they'd be able to pay back at the time. And some other barriers that were specific to our loan were the fifty employee limit, because some businesses have contract employees that put them over that limit. The two million dollar sales cap. The deadline for some was a barrier to get things done in the amount of time that was given. The availability of other forgivable sources, which I've mentioned. Some had an inability to prove loss at the time due to COVID. I feel like that might be different now. And for some, it was the requirement to be current on city taxes. As a result of this outreach and based on the feedback we received, we're suggesting that the following. Changes be made to the program to better serve our business community. They include increasing the employee limit from fifty to one hundred, increasing the sales cap from two million to six million. Having a rolling application process instead of a deadline, removing the priority categories that were there. And allowing those with city tax payment plans to apply for the loan as long as they have a payment plan that is in repayment. And the delinquent balance does not exceed the loan amount. One, one of the things that you'll see in the memo is that we are thinking about how to. Respond more quickly to some of these barriers if if they come up as people are looking to apply for the program. And so what we're requesting is that perhaps. If there are process changes that that need to be made, we're able to, with administration guidance, make those to be able to to better respond. These changes. In addition to being from our business community. Were also vetted by a committee of city staff and administration before, before they came here. It helps us to better. To better learn from our community and to know that we are offering a product that serves their needs. Before I move into the residential landlord forgiveness assistance, there will be time for questions at the end, of course. But before I move into the residential landlord forgive forgivable assistance program, does anyone have any questions specifically about the pandemic loan that I might be able to answer?
So I have, I don't see any councils. I have a couple real quick ones. Are we going to do some type of outreach to make sure that the need or the availability of the funds is there?
The availability of the funds for the program?
Yeah, we got to make sure that the small businesses are aware that this is there to help them if they need it.
Oh, yes, yes, we are. We have email lists that we use. To send information to people, and we also have a separate email list. That is all the people who have applied for any of our business assistance are specifically our COVID business assistance in the past. So that we can make sure that they're targeted, because this program might meet their needs where our C D B G programs didn't. We'll also put it on, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
No, no, finish what you're saying. I'm sorry.
We'll also put it on our city, our city social media pages and have it available there.
Okay, and is there a division, is the money divided so much would be available for nonprofits and so much for that specific to small businesses? Or is it just going to be open and one segment could end up using a majority of that? Not allowing the others to grab it. So I'm just, my question is related to my concern that small businesses. Could lose in the end if too many nonprofits apply.
I understand what you're saying, and I think that something I also want to make clear is that this loan is not forgivable. This loan is required to be paid back. And. I think that right now there's not a delineation between. Funds for nonprofit and funds for for profit in this program. That is something that could be considered.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask. And I believe I spoke with Misty about this over the summer, last summer, but I just wanted to follow up and make sure that. Communication is going out in a manner other than just email for our small businesses, given the area of town that I represent. I think there's probably some businesses that don't really use email so much, some of the smaller markets and things like that. Who may have also been impacted by this, and I just wanted to ask if there's other outreach plans in place as well.
Yeah, so Heidi, can I take that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So one of the things that we have been doing throughout the pandemic, especially with restrictions on, you know, meeting in person and things like that. Our code enforcement officers and especially our health inspector have been directly working with businesses to respond to challenges that they're having related to code. And so their staff is well knowledgeable about the programs we have, so that's actually been one of our most important connections to businesses that have been. You know, most in need, because not only do they share the resources that we have available through our department, they also follow up with us. So that we can make sure that we are also directly connecting to them, too. You know, it's been very important for us to leverage additional staff, just because the need has been so broad. And we have so many businesses to reach, so that's something that we'll continue to work with them on as well.
Awesome. I thought that was great when we spoke about it sometime last summer, Misty, and I'm glad to hear that's continuing.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Khalid.
I muted. Thank you. I had a similar question to Counselor Ray. And can you tell me, Misty or Heidi, like, what ways did you communicate? Like, did outreach, do you do like phone calling, email? Like, I just want to have a clear picture of how you did outreach. And then another comment after that.
Sure. Misty, did you want to take that, or would you like me to?
Right. So initially, our outreach was focused on. Our database of businesses that we had available to us and contact information. We originally split that up among staff to do initial outreach. And just check in with businesses, make them aware. We were, used that opportunity to collect the emails, because. That's the quickest, easiest way to get information out. We also, as I mentioned, we did direct outreach to specific businesses where. We had learned that they may be having a challenge or. That they were in need of assistance and would directly outreach them. We found that while we, the most. Probably productive connection that we had was that direct outreach and those phone calls. But we quickly found that there just wasn't enough staff time to continue that up, so we've been relying heavily on. The email outreach and utilizing our continued staff support that's out there working with the businesses. We also have been utilizing our partners in the neighborhood, in the community, so downtown Lewiston Association, making sure they're informed and aware. So they can communicate it out to their members. Same thing with the Chamber of Commerce. And other partners as well. So we're always open to other suggestions, just trying to be mindful of, you know. The capacity that we have as well.
And did that outreach occur after the deadline, application deadline, or in the midst of it, or before, or I don't know, early stages?
Yeah, most occurred. Throughout the spring, I would say through May and June, we were really focused on that.
Thank you. I mean, why I'm asking these questions is the the loan that had an available balance of like one hundred and fifty thousand and only. There were three people who, you know, applied and got the loan for like almost eleven thousand, so I hope the city can do. I know that it may not be, you know, enough staff time, but I wish, you know, the city really. Put more energy into doing outreach and calling businesses, and I know the COVID pandemic, maybe post COVID. We can do more intentional business meetings and all of that, but just seeing the number of applicants really just. Saddens me and also maybe the application process may be too complicated or. There may be other ways that we can, you know, make easier for businesses to apply for loans. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Good, thank you. And I just, I do want to acknowledge staff, though, because if you remember, if we remember correctly. The council put some pretty strong pressure on our administrator about outreach, and then I think the next day. After meeting with economic development, we had several people on the phones for hours. And correct me if I'm mistaken here, but they truly hundreds of calls to try to do outreach. I think the biggest concern for the small businesses was the idea that they had to pay it back going into a brand new pandemic. And they were concerned that, you know, their business could fail and they'd still owe all this money. But I do believe it's a really good point to keep reminding that outreach is so important.
Absolutely, and, you know, Counselor Khalid's recommendation for. Simplifying the process is exactly why we are here. You know, the feedback we were, we received is most businesses wanted grants or forgivable loans. But this is strictly a loan. We have tried to make it as flexible as possible to really be an emergency. For those that can't access any of the other grant programs that may be available to businesses and really be. You know, the assistance that absolutely is needed. And what we're tonight is to talk about some of the additional ways that we could simplify that this loan to make it even more accessible.
And can you share what the payback is, what percentage, and, you know, how flexible we are there, and then I'll turn it over to Counselor Julyness.
Heidi.
Is a zero percent loan. And repayment doesn't begin until the year after their closing date, and then the repayment happens over two years.
Okay, so that's pretty flexible. Counselor Julyness.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I was one of the fortunate few that got a phone call. I must have spent forty five minutes on the phone talking about some of this stuff. And first of all, I just want to say thank you for the effort that you put into that, you know, contacting businesses, trying to discern, you know. What was going on, and I think some of the barriers that were identified are legit. I mean, there was a lot of other offerings at this time for other businesses to look into that weren't. They didn't have to pay back, so I think that was a big deal. And I think that moving the priority categories, that was also a big deal, so I think there's some things that. Really you were able to identify. I think that you did a great job with outreach, actually, and I just want to commend you for that. I also want to thank you for not separating the nonprofit and the profits, because it is my opinion that nonprofits are doing a good business in this community. They are businesses, so I think that, you know, being able to identify some of that, looking at both categories was really important, so thank you for that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Counselor?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Just one last one comment. I'm wondering, I don't know, this can be, I know, like, you know, we. We are maybe the city's source staff and everything, but maybe in a perfect world, what we can do is do like a teaching or a workshop to like, do. You know, complete these applications, especially businesses who do need the help, but don't have like the system and the structure in place. To fill out these applications that are sometimes very intimidating and may, you know, be complicating.
That is a great suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the counselors on the small business law? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the residential landlord pro program.
So this program is something that would be completely new. An issue that we have been hearing a lot about is the difficulty small landlords are have are having meeting their expenses due to nonpayment of rent during COVID. It's not just a local issue. There is national concern about what's going to happen with the potential. For abandoned buildings when people can no longer pay their mortgage, because it is a cash flow business. And so. As we were talking to landlords and asking about different kinds of assistance. We found out that they really weren't eligible for a lot of the other assistance programs out there in the way that other small businesses were. So we started thinking about how we could. Help landlords out. While making sure that we are. Looking at those landlords who. looking at, at those landlords who, um, maybe having, maybe some of those smaller landlords. And I think maybe here we have, um, that, that you might see that in here. Um, but for landlords, um, part of the reason that, um, that they're having such a tough time is because unlike other businesses that have been able to adjust their business model, um, they really, unless they're going to raise rent, um, can't adjust their business model very much. And if you're not getting paid rent, raising it won't do anything. What they could have done in the past is go through the eviction process, which is also, um, very expensive to go through. But that's not an option right now for people who aren't paying rent, um, due to COVID. Um, there have been rental relief programs. Those have relied on tenants to both meet the eligibility requirements, which has been difficult for some tenants. Um, and also to, um, apply in the first place. Um, and as I already said, they're ineligible for the other programs. For this, um, for this program, some of the eligible uses that landlords have mentioned, um, that are difficult to cover um, without the rent, uh, availability is, um, heating, utilities, trash collection, insurance, taxes, and basic, um, things that make the building operate. So these eligible uses would be, um, specifically for the, um, the one building that the, um, that the assistance would be, um, going for. So for eligibility, um, in the property has to be a Lewiston residential property with two to eight units. Um, they have to be current on taxes as of January first, twenty twenty, or have a payment plan with no lien on their rental property. Um, they have to have an acceptable credit report for owners with twenty percent or greater ownership in the property. Um, they can be owner occupants as long as the other occup- occupants or other units are not occupied by relatives or family. Um, they have to be able to demonstrate the revenue loss due to non-payment of rent. Um, it's only one loan per landlord, um, the specific individual landlord. And then, uh, the rental property for this, um, assistance would be held as collateral. So this is a, um, because this would be forgivable assistance, um, they would have to meet some criteria in order for it to be forgiven. If the criteria was not, um, met for two years, then they would need to, in the third year of the loan, pay back the entirety of the loan. For two years, um, the, the, uh, building would need to remain code compliant. It needs to be code compliant, um, when they apply, um, or before the loan closing. Um, they need to agree to accept GA vouchers for the two-year term of the loan. Um, this meets a, a problem that we have, um, sometimes finding available units for people who have vouchers. We have people who have the GA vouchers or general assistance vouchers, but they're not able to find a unit. They have to be in the rental registration database, um, and remain in the database and, uh, update their property in it for the two years of, uh, the loan and maintain ownership of the building for the entirety of the loan. Remaining in the, um, hundred and fifty thousand that was originally allocated to the pandemic emergency small business loan is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. We are proposing that forty-eight thousand of that be used for this, um, forgivable landlord assistance program. And ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty remain for the pandemic small business, um, emergency loan. And that would essentially be the program.
Counselor Riley?
Thank you. Um, I had a couple of questions on, on this landlord loan. Um, I was just wondering where the four thousand dollar figure for this came from?
Uh, that was the amount we used for the pandemic emergency small business loan, and so we kept that same amount for this.
Okay. Um, and then the eligible uses, um, one of them says, expenses incurred prior to November twenty twenty are ineligible for reimbursement. Could you explain why that date milestone is in there?
Yeah. Um, essentially, as we were thinking about how to make this, um, to make this work, it started as, as really thinking about the heating assistance and how to help people with those heating costs. And before November, um, the heating costs are not as significant. And so, um, starting with bills that were in November twenty twenty and allowing reimbursement of those, um, would, uh, be helpful and solve that, um, problem of the heating, which, um, it was originally used for, or originally thought of for. Um, as we were discussing the program, uh, in general, it was thought, why not, why not be able to use it for other expenses on the building? Um, and so that is when the other eligible uses came in. And, um, yeah, that's, that's really, I hope I answered. I did, I'm happy to follow up.
I just, I might suggest that it's slightly more expensive than that. I just think about, um, you know, the, the, my utility costs in a year and how much those are. And, um, I, I think the four thousand number is appropriate if that's what you're doing for the small business loans. And I think that keeping those the same is appropriate, but I, I don't feel a little less sure of that November twenty twenty date being in there as a, as a solid thing.
Um, are you, are, are you saying that it, um, should be earlier? Or, um, that maybe, um, like January or?
I'm saying earlier.
Earlier. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Jalinas?
Thank you, Mr. Rick. So Heidi, the, the amount of money is forty-eight thousand, which would, if the term is, or if the, the loan term is four thousand, we're talking about like twelve landlords, right? So I know it's hard because like with the last, with the small business stuff, we only had like five inquiries, ended up assisting three businesses. Do you have a sense of how many? I mean, do you have a sense of how many applications we'd get for something like this? Is this a huge need that's been expressed?
It is, it is a huge, I'm sorry.
So I, yeah, I guess I'm just wondering what your, what your thoughts are around that.
We have heard from several landlords that this is a need. Um, I know that when Ellie Smith from the Housing Committee was here, she also mentioned it in her capacity as, as a landlord. And there is a, um, another landlord on the committee who has mentioned it also. Um, I don't know how many that we'll get. Um, if we, um, I don't know, I think we would have to think about that after, depending on how many, um, on what, when we really know what the need is or what the interest is in this program.
Thank you.
And is this, uh, this is CDBG money? Is, is that where this pool, no?
No, this is not CDBG money. Um, landlords, uh, it's difficult to qualify landlords under CDBG um, because of the national objectives that you have to meet. Most of them do not income qualify themselves and, um, they're not hiring people, um, which are two of the ways that people can, uh, qualify for CDBG assistance.
Okay, so where did this pool of money come from?
So I'm going to defer to Heather for that question, um, to know exactly what this is for.
I have it. It was the land about, um, that allocated for the pandemic emergency small business program.
Okay, thank you for the reminder. I think that was, uh, brought up to us previously, so thank you. Counselor Khalid?
Just following up on, um, the question by Counselor Jalinas. I'm wondering, Heather, not Heather, Heidi, if we're able to, if, if we see a lot of need, especially from the landlords, are we able to like increase that amount?
Um, yeah, the forty-eight thousand was something that we, um, that we put in there, but it, it could be changed, um, if the council, um, suggested. That one of the things that, um, that we had put in the memo, I think I mentioned earlier, was, um, figuring out how we can be flexible to those changing needs. So if that's something that the council wanted to give us the flexibility to do is to identify that and move funds to the program and from, that is something we could do also.
Yeah, I, I'd definitely be for that. Thank you.
So are you, are you saying, Heidi, so it's, it's not so many small businesses applied, but we used up the landlord money that we may have flexibility to increase funding into the landlord side of it?
Yes, those two numbers are completely arbitrary.
Okay. And the amount of the loan up to four thousand, is that what it is up to? So if a landlord only needs a couple thousand and they think they'll be okay, that's what we would offer?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other, uh, questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, I was really pleased to see this program reworked, uh, because I do believe it's gonna, gonna be able to be used for more folks now. Uh, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, seeing no further questions or comments, we'll move to item B, a review of the building plumbing and zoning fee schedule. Hey, Nick.
Hey, how you doing?
Good, thank you. Got the whole crew coming in tonight.
Waiting for Dave, I believe.
I like the Lewiston background. Where do people get that from?
That was, uh, that's been done by Peter Parker. And it's, uh, it's available on our shared drive.
We, we can, uh, we can get those to you, uh, Counselor Khalid, actually all the council mayor. We have a couple of varieties that you're seeing on the screen, so we can get you those, certainly.
I'm not sure what David, when he disappeared for a moment, he'll be there as soon as he comes back.
Okay. Either one of you, can either one of you open it up or? If you'd rather wait for Dave, that's fine, but if you can open it up, I would encourage that.
Well, uh, I'll introduce myself. Um, I'm Nick Richard. I'm one of the code enforcement officers. I'll let Tom introduce himself. Looks like we got Dave coming on.
Got a little bit of internet instability this evening, so.
I'm Tom Maynard. Um, I could say that we made great, actually, I'll, I'm going to give credit where credit's due. Nick written here did all the hard work of this. I was pretty taken up with, uh, doing inspections and permitting with the kind of activity we have going on in the city now. One of the things we wanted to get away from was assessing permit fees based on values. Um, we get people not wanting to be forthright with the values and we'd want them to tell us how much they're really spending because that gets reported out and it shows that we're making investment in the community. So we wanted to have something that was essentially was more exact scientific, so to speak. And, uh, we did it according to square footage and Nick can go over those things with you. Uh, like I said, he did a great job on this. So Nick, you can take it away if you want, unless Dave comes on.
Dave's on, so Dave, anything you'd like to add before?
Sounds like you guys are done, so I, I don't know that. No, no, I, I, I think, uh, I mean, you folks recall, we were here a couple of weeks ago with the electrical fee, um, adjustments. Um, same idea with these fees tonight, the building, plumbing and zoning. Um, part of this is to simplify the, the amounts that we're collecting, so it's easier for front-end staff and applicants. Part of it is related to us revising our applications. So we're getting the information we need to process permits more accurately and actually collect the fees that we should have been collecting all along. Um, and so that's resulted in a number of adjustments here. Um, you sort of have the same information and we provided, provided it in the same format as last time as far as existing and proposed language, um, showing, um, what an inflation increase would look like. You'll see both with building and zoning that we are doing increases, uh, above and beyond what the inflation is. I think I heard Tom catching on, on the end there, you know, one of the big changes with the building permit fee is associating it with, um, square footage instead of value. Um, another change that we're putting in there with respect to building permits is a site development permit. Um, it's not uncommon for a project that goes through development review to receive approval from maybe the planning board or the staff review committee. And then they go out and break ground without getting a building permit because they're not interested in starting the foundation work. But while they're out there breaking ground, there's a need for inspections, maybe because of compaction, retaining walls, stormwater systems, things of that nature. So that would be a new fee that basically puts the property owner developer and the city on notice that activity is actually occurring out there. Um, I guess I'll stop there in, in the, in the event that, I'm not sure if the council wants us to, um, hit each one of these individually, or if you want me to summarize them all. Um, again, Nick and, uh, Tom, I've invited them here this evening because they're really, um, instrumental in, you know, making sure that these numbers are accurate, that they reflect what we found with other communities, communities. Uh, Nick did a lot of the background work, Tom billing the building inspector, um, is kind of in the front hands. Um, you know, implementing and making sure that the fees we're collecting are accurate. So I'll, I'll stop there and, um, proceed as you guys would like to see.
It's, uh, so counselors can chime in, but I think, yes, a quick overview would probably be a good thing just for, uh, for, so that's a public record.
Yep, I, I can do that. Um, so with the building permit fee schedule, we looked at, uh, some, some changes to increase them to, to kind of match some neighboring communities. Um, and to kind of bring us up to speed with, uh, twenty twenty-one fee structures. Uh, if you start from the beginning, uh, we added some language to include two-family residential townhouses, three stories or less. Um, that all, that's all basically as the code requires. And then we, we increased the base from twenty-five to fifty. The square footage fee on that stayed the same. Uh, we went for accessory structures. We, again, doubled the base fee. We went up on the square footage fee to fifteen cents from seven cents. With renovations, as Tom and Dave, uh, alluded to earlier, we changed that structure because we didn't get as, we didn't feel we were getting accurate information from the applicant. Um, and it's a lot easier to verify square footage than it is to verify the value. So we went from a value base to a fifty-dollar base plus twenty-five cents a square foot for renovation. Um, and then we included, we, we have a, a new line item for, uh, any renovation without any square footage. If you were to add handrails or guardrails, it doesn't really compute to square footage on the floor. That's a fifty-dollar permit fee. Um, windows and door replacement only, that's going to be like a per window fee at fifty dollars for the first piece. And then five additional, uh, five dollars per additional piece. And then moving down to multifamily, multifamily residential, three or more dwelling units. Uh, we, we doubled the base fee there. We kept the same square footage fee. And again, with renovations, we, we changed that from a value to a base fee plus square footage and we kept it the same as, uh, new construction additions, thirty cents a square foot. Uh, again, renovations without square footage, fifty, fifty dollars. Uh, windows or door replacements are fifty for the first piece, five for each additional piece. Moving down to mobile homes, uh, we, uh, doubled the base fee on that and then brought up the square footage to twenty cents for fifteen additions. We doubled the base, square footage stayed the same. Removal of a mobile home used to actually be a hundred dollars and it was elsewhere in the permit fee schedule. We went down to fifty. Getting lost here, scrolling too fast. And then we go to commercial, uh, which includes mixed use with a residential. So if you have, like Hartley Block has a first floor is commercial and the, and the floors above are residential. Something like that would fall into this category where new construction, we doubled that base fee to fifty from twenty-five. And then the square footage went up to forty-five cents from thirty-five cents. And again, same, same deal with the renovation. Those next three line items. They're going down to swimming pools, uh, we just, we brought up swimming pools for above ground. We went to fifty from thirty-five. In-ground, we went from, uh, eighty to a hundred. And then we go to all other structures and uses, uh, fences. And we added retaining walls because the code requires that any retaining wall, uh, you know, greater than, uh, three and a half feet tall be permitted. And we kind of felt that a fence and retaining wall at that level are the same thing, so we went with forty dollars there. Underground storage tanks, uh, such as, you know, gas stations. The first tank was fifty dollars plus fifteen dollars additional. We got rid of that. We, we separated it out into residential installation and commercial installation. And the residential was at fifty plus thirty dollars additional tanks. Commercial went to a hundred, first tank fifty additional. And then if you were to remove any tanks from the site, uh, such as the mobile station up on, uh, Lisbon Street near East Avenue, that would have been a fifty-dollar permit. Uh, moving a building other than a mobile home was, is, that remains a hundred dollars. Um, we looked at driveways, we added some language to kind of make that cleaner, uh, as the code does require. Uh, as the code does require any, any impervious surface that gets altered, it, it does need to go through our approval process as there are code requirements that need to be met in order to, uh, build it properly. Uh, we doubled that fee to $50 from 25. Uh, we did away with foundation only because that's just covered under what type of construction it is. If it's a foundation for commercial or foundation for residential, it will fall into that category. Parking lots, we, we moved that, we got rid of that line item and created site development permit, which would include a parking lot or an engineered retaining wall and then draining, grubbing, filling and grading of the site. Uh, so to, to cover the cost of a parking lot, the hundred dollar base fee plus the two cents per square foot of the disturbed area covers that, that cost and then some. So we're actually, I mean, we're, we're gonna cover what the previous cost would be and then it kind of ups it from there. Change of use went from $40 to $80. And then a home occupation, we added that separately to kind of separate it out from a change of use. A home occupation is generally done within a residence. Uh, so we kept that down at $40. Certificate of occupancy, that's included in the permit, but if it's not, if a realtor asks us, ask us for something, it's $50. And then signs, we, we just kind of cleaned up the language there. We added per side to make sure that there's no, no confusion there. Uh, as far as demolition is concerned, we took out basically all the other language because it was more or less based on square footage at different levels. So instead of, you know, a large project being more or less, we went with residential being $25 plus five cents a square foot per floor, including the foundation. And commercial being $50 plus five cents, but, uh, per square foot, uh, per floor, including the foundation. And then the last change is we kind of changed one word in the building permit fee reimbursement policy to make it clearer for us. We changed issuance to review. It just made more sense for us.
I could appreciate if people like hearing Nick and reviewing this and being like, what is this all about? And why do we have all these fees? But there's actually building code requirements that are tied to every single one of these things on this list here. And so part of the clarification that Nick's talking about with each of these is, again, goes to the point of making it more clear for the applicant and more clear for staff as to the information we're actually looking for in order to process a permit. So there's a lot here. It might not look as, look like a simplification to you guys. It feels like it to us. But that, that's part of the reason why we're going through this exercise.
And you shared that you compared it with other communities, so were, I, I mean, do they all average out right around here or?
Yeah, 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 they have, uh, Wyndham, Wyndham's pretty similar. Portland's get similar, uh, fee structure. Those are the, the main two that I looked up. Uh, there, there are others that, um, I know. Yeah, that's basically it, yeah.
And I'll add that it's, it's, it's close to what I was doing when I was in Scarborough, a long time ago, and even the two counties in Maryland. Although some of those were a bit more than what we have here. And there were other associated fees, but when we targeted this was to try to capture the things that we required to review under the code, the main uniform building code, which is statutory.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Thank you. Um, so I had a couple of questions. Um, I, I think it's great that we are taking a look at this and did the electrical. Um, so one thing I was, I had not known before and it came to light in this reading is the belated fee, how does that come to be assessed and applied to our folks?
We actually deal with that more often than you would think. Um, so yeah, a lot of the times we show up, especially this past summer, there were instances where people were putting up pools left and right because COVID, everyone was home and they wanted to swim. And I would go out and I would see that and I would come back and check and see that, no, there were no permits pulled. And they would get a nice letter from us in the mail, basically saying that you need to come in and pull a permit at the belated fee. So there were plenty of people that were not very happy with us, but unfortunately that it has to be done properly. There's zoning that comes into play and then there's also building requirements as well as electrical for a pool.
Enclosure requirements are very important.
Yeah, that, that's, I was glad to see that in there as kind of this wraparound, uh, make sure that the loop is closed. And then just, um, a, a wording change, um, under building permit fee reimbursement policy, just changing he slash she to they, just to include, uh, continue to be inclusive with our language.
Yeah, we can, we can make that change.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question, I guess, at this point, and then perhaps a comment. We've seen electrical. Um, we've seen tonight, we have other permit fees that are going to be presented to the council. Perhaps for Director Hedega?
Tonight, yeah, after review of the building, it's plumbing and zoning and land use.
Is there anything else to go before us?
Not from our department.
Okay. I would only caution, I don't know what the, uh, the game plan is at this point in time. When do you intend to come before the council to sanction these changes?
So if the council, um, doesn't have any additional comments or concerns after night, we could be back as soon as your next public hearing, uh, your next regular scheduled meeting. And talking with Heather Hunter, we wouldn't necessarily make these effective though until July 1st.
Then in that case, I'll blow the whistle, raise both hands and say, let's slow down just a bit. We have not even started our budget for this year, not knowing what that's gonna be. I, for one, am not in favor of dumping a hundred percent increases on some of these fees and then coming in with a budget, a school budget that's asking for a major increase. I don't know what our city budget is. Let's put this off until after our budget session. That sound reasonable to the other counselors? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Ray?
Would disagree with that. I think, um, what we're talking about here is a lot of new initiatives, um, rather than just regular tax year over year. And so, um, I, I think a, as we look at our revenues for next year. Um, and I actually can't see one of the revenue lines in here, Dave, um, on the, what is it called? Sorry, the.
Yeah, you probably, I apologize. I don't know why that, it is, came out even more difficult to read with the PDF, but, um, if you're looking at the building permit one, um, again, the, the spreadsheet with the comparison, just to remind folks what we did, we took actual permits that were issued in 2020, calculate, showed what we actually collected for those fees and what they would be under the new permit fee, uh, schedule. So, um, what you're, what you probably can't read is a total of $79,314 under the current permit fee schedule. And under the proposed permit, it would be 128,813.
Awesome. And I, I just think that, um, it, it seems like a comparing apples to oranges to me, um, to suggest that the fee structure can't change if we are looking at conservative, um, tax. Gosh, sorry, the words escaping me, but I, I just, I don't see them as the same personally.
Yeah, Kate, I, I do, you know, I think we have, have to consider this though, because not only will, uh, not only potentially, uh, proposed tax increase, but I think all of our utilities, uh, we can probably expect potential increases, at least at the start of the process. To have three areas of significant increases, I, 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 I'm not convinced I agree with Counselor Clement, but I'm glad he's bringing it up because we're gonna be increasing fees, taxes and utilities, uh, or I shouldn't say we're gonna, I mean, we're, it's gonna be proposed to us that we're, you know, to look at that and, uh, that's gonna be challenging. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just to remind my colleagues that a fee is just another name for a tax. Call it what you want to, but, uh, you're gonna increase the fee, you're gonna increase the tax. Let's, uh, go at this slowly and deliberately, make sure where we stand rather than dump something on a bunch of people who are not gonna appreciate major increases. And, uh, you know, there is gonna be a breaking point somewhere. Uh, we're gonna come out of this and come out of this hole. Let's, uh, let's do it deliberately, but cautiously. Thank you.
Thank you. And either way, I want to acknowledge the hard work going into this because we do have to, you know, we have to make sure that our fees are at, you know, an average level and that we're not losing money. So Dave, all the work your department's doing in this is, is appreciated.
No, that I, that, I appreciate the comments being made too. I mean, we, we discussed this, um, before coming to you folks. You know, in part anticipating that there may be some concerns with the increase. Um, you know, I'll, I'll remind the council too, while it may not be absolutely relative, building permits haven't been revised since 2013. Uh, zoning and land use 2010. Um, and the plumbing firm permit fee, um, when we'll talk about that in a second, we're already collecting that. That's just more, more of a, you know, formality, housekeeping measure as far as cleaning that up. So, um, just for what it's worth, that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement, do you have another question?
Just a comment for Mr. Hedega. I do appreciate the work that's being put into it. It's just that I hear from people out there in the real world that, uh, times are still tough. Yeah, I appreciate the work that you put in, that your staff has put in. I know they do a very professional job. I've met with several of them on site, uh, throughout the past year due to constituent concerns and, uh, have actually gone to bat for code enforcement on a couple of cases. So I, I appreciate that, but all I'm trying to do is advocate for those people who are paying the tab. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, I suspect this will be on, on a, an agenda in the near future, so we'll be having this discussion one more time.
Do you folks need any explanation with plumbing and zoning, or are you folks good at this point?
I think, so, uh, you know, I think we've got a pretty good broad view of the potentials that are coming. If you think there's something significant, or if, or if any counselor wants to go over and in more detail those other two, but if you think there's something that you really need to bring to.
If I, if I can, Mayor, the only thing I'd add, um, I guess with respect to zoning and land use, because plumbing is a fee that we're already collecting. And then, and the comments made about, um, you know, being sensitive to additional costs. Development review costs, we were trying to be mindful for smaller projects and the increase there is rather minimal. Cause usually that's the mom and pop or the startup and whatnot. But even the increases we're proposing for major projects and whatnot, um, specifically those that require, um, delegated review where we're reviewing projects on behalf of DOT or DEP. We are thousands of dollars less than if the project went to the state. To get a project through site law at the state, you're starting at probably $3,000 and you can go up to $10,000. So just something to keep in mind. I realize we're not acting upon this tonight, but, um, your, your comments about what other communities are doing and being sensitive. If these projects were in another community where you had a site law project, you'd be paying significantly more than what we're even looking to increase, so, um, just something you should be aware of.
And, and just a quick look at it, it typically it's a hundred dollar increase in most things. There's, there's some that are a bit less, some that are a bit more, but does that summarize that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, anywhere from, you know, a hundred dollars is a couple that are $200 there. One of the bigger increases actually is in the advertising. Um, we have to run legal ads. Um, that's a bill that we have to pay the Sun Journal. Um, and we don't, we, we, sometimes we break even, sometimes we collect more, sometimes it's an amendment that the council or planning board initiates and we don't collect any money for that as, as well. So there's a, there's a pot of money there that constantly fluctuates depending on the number of projects that we get, that we have to pay for the legal ads.
Okay, thank you. Any, okay, I see a couple of questions, uh, Counselor, and I'm not sure who popped up first, but Counselor Ray?
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to ask in practical terms, um, this and the electrical permit fee schedules. I mean, most people would be going through contractors for the, this type of work, right? Or am I just very much underestimating how many handy folks live here?
The majority of these are, are for, with everything we're talking about. The majority of it is gonna be pulled by contractors, but yes, a, any one of you folks, um, are looking to make minor improvements over the weekend, you can come in and get the permit, you know, you're gonna have to provide adequate plans and documentation and whatnot, but there's certainly a percentage, a good percentage of people that are pulling the permits themselves as a homeowner. And, you know, that's where there's a lot of education that, you know, staff like Tom and Nick are, you know, kind of holding the, the common person's hands as to why you need to get these permits and the information necessary. Development review, you know, two thirds of those, that's a contractor, that's an engineer, that's a, a consultant pulling those types of things. Electrical permits, the majority of those are done by licensed electricians, plumbing permits, licensed plumbers. It's the building permits where, you know, you're the homeowner, you're doing the shed, the deck. Maybe you're handy enough and you can put a small addition on or something, but above, above and beyond that, it becomes a contractor.
Yeah, I just, uh, you know, in my adventures owning a home as a, a young person, um, definitely contracted out a lot of these services and they talk about, well, some of them talk about not pulling permits and I yell at them, but, um, they definitely talk about that the permit fee will be rolled into that expense and that sort of thing. So I, I don't think anyone, I just am trying to get a sense if I'm just like jaded and like, um, other folks wouldn't know that per, per chance. Um, and I'm only privy to it as a counselor, who cares about that sort of stuff? Um, but it sounds like the professionals would know about these fees and the increases to them if they happened.
Yeah, and, and it's not uncommon and Tom and Nick can probably speak to this as well. Or, you know, for those that know our staff, Linda and Kathy, that, you know, there are, there are front end people who are processing all these different. It's not uncommon where people are coming in and saying, and, and, and this is a genuine comment, that's it? That's all I have to pay? You know, we also get the comment too where they're like, you know, 50 bucks for a fence or, you know, and they, you know, but any fee is too much for some people. So, um, but again, to Nick's point, we're not necessarily at a line. I, I totally appreciate the comments and concerns that some of the counselors have made. I get it, you know, there's a lot on your plate this year, so.
And I just want to add to that, I mean, I, again, I, I appreciate where you guys are coming from on that, especially you, Counselor Clement. But just to add, any commercial project is, it requires a plan that's been done and drawn out by a licensed, um, architect or engineer. So they're, they're, they're gonna spend money before they even get to us, um, to, to make their project happen.
That's super helpful context, just to understand what, what type of folks are coming to you with, for these things. And, um, I can definitely see, you know, a, a homeowner who's trying to tackle this on their own might scoff at that, but, um, knowing what percentage is contractors and licensed folks is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Dave, you had mentioned that like the legal ads and having to, to pay for those in the paper costs quite a bit of, uh, money. Is that something that's required by statute or by city charter ordinance?
Uh, by statute, we still have to replace an ad, um, you know, in a public publication. You know, certain types of projects require, um, advertising twice, sometimes it's once. So between what our, between what statute says and what our local ordinance is, that's what's driving those, those legal ads. There's actually been some bills in past sessions where they were trying to eliminate that need, um, to do that because there was some debate as to whether or not people are actually looking at those legal ads. I'm sure the newspaper industry doesn't want to see that revenue loss and whatnot, but it's still a resource that we take advantage of and, and, and are required to do.
Okay, yeah, I'll be honest, I don't think most millennials even know those types of ads exist in the paper. We never see them, we're never going to. So I would very much, I guess, like to see a change at the state level to amend those requirements. Um, I know I asked for us to review our city charter and any of those requirements for, you know, print publications. It's 2021, we should be able to use social media and, and cheap online, um, ways to do that, so, um, I don't know, maybe they can write up a resolution for us to send up to the state and maybe start banging the drum up there, but things like that, you know, drive up costs for the city. And if the state, you know, all these extra costs they place on us with all these unfunded mandates, the least they can do is make a change like this. So, um, my gears are turning, I'll give this some thought, but, um, other than that, I, I do like, you know, the proposed changes are, are good. They seem reasonable to me. You know, both sections presented, so I just want to commend you guys for the hard work as well to, to modernize Lewiston.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clement? You're on mute?
There we go, sticking again, sorry about that. Uh, to Counselor Jensen, if he is willing to come up with a resolution to require the state to provide for unfunded mandates like we had in New Hampshire, I'll join you in a heartbeat on that one. We had that in New Hampshire and boy, it stopped a lot of the foolishness that came out of Concord, I'll tell you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And on the, uh, just for clarification on the advert. And on the, just for clarification, on the advertising, those are for large projects, right? I mean, if somebody wants to put on a new deck, you don't have to do advertisements. But if somebody wants to put up a Dunkin' Donuts and on Main Street, you need to notify all the.
Right, so the only time we involve a legal ad in the paper is if it's a project going to the planning board. So it's bigger projects and basically anything over 5,000 square feet or something that generates a lot of traffic. Or when you folks see rezoning requests, whether it's a zoning map amendment or a text amendment, those require legal ads as well, specifically by state statute.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, thank you folks very much for attending tonight's meeting and sharing this with us.
Thank you.
All right, anything else councillors? Okay, seeing none, city administrative DOTA, anything?
Nope, just hope everyone has a great night.
With that, well, we actually already adjourned, this is a workshop, so I think we're good. Just wave and smile. All right, thank you all, have a great evening.